Emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Cisco Webex for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through the dialing of the following phone number. And the password can be found at sau53.org under the Remote School Board Meetings header. We're also providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access it via Webex or telephone. Again, instructions have been posted at the website sau53.org. We're also providing a mechanism for the public to alert the board during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has problems accessing the meeting, please email Sandy. That's Svaline, S-V-A-L-I-N-E at sau53.org. And lastly, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting with roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Um, let's see, I think we might have everybody. Uh, Amy.
I am present and I will be mostly joined by my daughter Iris Tirmal.
Anne?
Present and alone.
April?
Present and alone.
Jean?
Present and alone.
And I am also present and alone. So let me just scan through here real quick. Okay. So agenda number two is agenda review. Patty, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. There is a discussion that I would like to have regarding one of our important articles. My plan is to do that under 6B with the school district meeting stuff. But I did invite Jerry Flurry from the municipal budget committee to come because he had a couple of particular concerns. He did indicate that he may have to, um, he had some prior engagement in Manchester that he wasn't sure if it was going to happen. I'm going to try to keep an eye on the participants list. And if he joins us, I may shift gears so that we can have that conversation while he's here. Otherwise, we will keep it under 6B.
Andy, this is April. Under informational items, there's no items listed. Could we please add one item and that's the announcement of all the candidates that are running in the Pembroke School District? Thank you.
Sure. If I know them, I can, I guess I can, Patty, do you have that list of names?
I have not spoken to Kathy to see if she verified if anyone filed with Cindy. So I only have the candidates who filed at the SAU office, but I can give you those if you'd like.
Okay, so we'll go with whatever information we have at the time, I suppose.
Andy, this is Anne.
Sure.
On a gender report, um, excuse me, a gender review under board reports. Can we add selectmen so I can give you an update on their meeting and voting?
Um, yeah, does that have to do with anything other than just the meeting stuff?
Nope.
Okay, uh, maybe can we hit that under 6B as well when we're talking about the school district meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, if I, I'm going to write a note, but if I forget, remind me, please.
Thank you.
Let's be. Okay. Um, so we'll move on to agenda number three, minutes of previous meetings. We have two on the docket today. If there's corrections, we can take them separately, otherwise we can do them as one. Any feelings? Thoughts? Comments?
Um, Andy.
I'm fine with that.
To approve December 14th, 2020 meeting minutes?
Okay, we've got a motion for December 14th.
Amy second.
Thank you. A discussion around the 1214 minutes. Okay, then on a roll call vote, motion to approve December 14th, 2020. Jean?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So January 11th.
This is Anne. I make a motion to approve the January 11th, 2021 minutes.
Thank you.
Amy seconds.
All right, discussion around the 111 minutes. Okay, um, I'll try to go the opposite direction this time. Amy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
I believe this was the meeting I was absent from. Is that correct? I'm looking at the minutes right there. I will abstain. Thank you.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes. All right, that's all we have for minutes for tonight. So agenda number four is our public comment section. I will keep time. We will try to stick as close as 15 minutes as we can. Please keep your comments as brief as you can. We do have a three minute time limit. Let me just get my stopwatch up here. And in case it's your first time joining us, um, we will look for hands. So if you would like to contribute to the public comment portion, go ahead and hit the raise hand button in your client. If you could find it. When I don't see hands anymore, um, we will ask people on the phone to unmute themselves if they have anything to contribute. So if you're on the phone, hold tight till the end. I'll try to save a couple of minutes at the end for folks on the phone. So I see Mr. Girardi. Tim, go ahead.
Thanks, Andy. Um, hey, everyone. I just wanted to come on and say that, you know, I'm really hopeful that we can come to terms about giving parents the choice to choose whether it's in class or full remote. I'm going to still, uh, keep speaking to that. We really do need to, um, get more consistency for the students that are not remote. I think the remote option is, is working fine, but there are those of us, my, my family included, that really do need to have that in-person learning experience. Remote and hybrid is really just not, not working for us. And given the recent data that has been, uh, disseminated, uh, through the media, through the governor's office, I really believe that we are at a place where we can have an option to not say everyone has to go back, give the option for full remote, give the option for full in-class learning. Also hopeful we can get away from the Monday, uh, I'll just call it open day, uh, and, and have that be traditional learning time for the students. Definitely need to get back to five days a week. And I'm hopeful that after winter break over the next month, some serious planning can happen. And we can look to get the schools open back up at least on a, um, new hybrid defined basis within the, uh, within the school district. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Um, there's another hand. I see Brian Gleaton. Go ahead.
Thanks. I just want to echo Tim's sentiment, understanding that it's not an agenda topic for this evening. Looking forward to the additional planning time to hopefully get the option for both full remote and in person. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Um, if you two gentlemen wouldn't mind lowering your hands unless you have something else to say, just so I can keep track. Thanks very much. Um, any other hands? Not seeing any at the moment. So I'll check in one more time since we've still got some time, but, um, right now I'll switch over to the phone. So there's a handful of people on the phone. If you're called into the meeting and you've got something you'd like to contribute to public comment, you should be able to hit star six to unmute yourself and then just go ahead and state your name and I'll recognize you. And you can go right ahead. So I'll give that 30 seconds or so. And if anybody else that's on your computer wants to, uh, raise your hand during this time, I'll give it one more check before I move on. Okay, I'm not seeing any phones unmuted, not seeing any further hands. So I will move on to agenda item number five. Consent agenda?
Uh, this is Anne. Um, I may not be, I may, I may not be seeing it, but do we have a second public comment?
Um, we do not. I, so our policy says that we have to have one. And just because the meetings have been going so long and that's the second public comment section has been after 10 o'clock at night. Um, I decided to remove it for now just to pare things down. But again, the policy says we have one, so I kept that there at the beginning. So, um, if, I think, I'm hoping that with, with budget gone by or almost gone by, that maybe we can, you know, get back onto some shorter meetings. And I'm happy to add that back in if that happens.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to be sure I didn't miss it. Thank you.
So consent agenda says zero. Anything pop up, Patty?
No, still zero.
All right. So then the meat of the meeting, agenda item number six, immediate business. So I believe the motion that was made last time or maybe two times ago regarding the instructional model did say specifically that we were going to have another in-depth discussion and talk about things going forward at our next meeting on 216. So you'll see there's not as many bullet points and not as, um, as much here. But I did want to at least get a update on the matrix from Patty and see kind of where we're at with numbers. And then if anybody has any questions, um, we can do that.
Thank you. So I updated your, um, decision-making matrix in the drive for you. Currently, Merrimack County is at 392.4 cases per 100,000. The town of Pembroke is currently, uh, 31 active cases. And I would just remind people that this is a 14-day rolling average. And then the positive results in our schools, so this would be students currently positive. We have zero at PA, four at Three Rivers, and zero at Hill. I did keep us in the hybrid shaded area for staff absenteeism and student absenteeism. Only because as we've been reporting right along, we are getting a lot of, um, quarantines for different reasons, as well as pending test results. So we are still seeing, uh, absences in both our staff and students. Manageable at this point, but, um, definitely still have absences. Our cleaning supplies are good and our compliance is okay. All of the county data found on the second page is also updated, um, from the New Hampshire COVID dashboard. And overall, cases are down a little bit, um, up, I think maybe in one or two places, but, um, not as dire as it was, uh, around the holidays for sure. And I did include the tracking sheet that the nurses, um, keep for all the cases they have tracked. So there's data from September to February. And they're up to between the tracking testing and quarantines and all of that. They're up to 845 tracked cases for all of those. So our school nurses are certainly, uh, busy this year. And then there's data for the month of January. And then at the bottom, we added, um, the current positive cases, even though that's on the matrix. We added it to the tracking sheet for you to take a look at. And that's about it.
Okay, this is Anne. I just have a quick question. So Patty, when you're saying tracking cases, is that eight, eight hundred? I didn't write the rest of that number down, but is that 800 positive cases or is that just contact tracing?
No, thank you, Anne. Um, no, that's just total for the entire school year, all the different cases they've had to trace. So for positive cases, people who are symptomatic, people who are quarantined, um, so that's everything.
Thank you, Patty.
Yep.
And just to follow up on that, Anne, for, for the public that's listening, I'll read off a couple of these totals just so that they're out there. The, the actual positive cases have been 60. I believe I'm hitting the right, yeah, this is from September till now. The, uh, folks that have been symptomatic and sent for testing is 389. Folks that had to quarantine due to travel is 29. Quarantine due to exposure is 335. And quarantine because they opted out of testing was 32. So all of that should add up to that 845 number. Any other questions for Patty around the matrix?
Um, Andy, this is Amy. I have a comment in sort of the higher heading letter A, school instructional model. I just wanted to communicate to Patty and to the principals. I am really hopeful that at our next meeting, we are going to come out of that with, um, an approvable plan to get at least kindergarten, ideally kindergarten and first grade, uh, more in school in more of what looks like a full-time fashion. I think that, um, I, I have a really strong desire to really push as hard as we can to see if we can make that happen. And so I hope that, um, you guys are working on discussing that.
Thanks, Amy. Anything else? Okay, um, so we'll move on to 6B, but like I said, um, instructional model will be a main topic on our next agenda for sure. So 6B is our school district meeting. Um, I'm going to scroll through this list right here and see if Jerry happens to be with us. I don't think so. So let me start with that, if you don't mind Patty, before we dive into the other stuff. I want to preface this by saying that I'm not sure it's something that we necessarily have to take action on tonight. Even though the public hearing is two days away, we obviously don't have time to modify the documents that are going to be passed out. And ultimately, since we decided last time that our meeting is not going to be until May 1st, um, that's when this would actually be voted on. And it is, um, our attorney Dean said that that being the case and that this topic doesn't have any money involved in, in this possible modification. It doesn't need to be, you know, taken care of before the public hearing. So what I'm talking about here is, um, I'm sorry, I don't, didn't bring the thing. I believe it's article six, the, the new vehicle, um, trust fund. So that was recommended by the NBC and then, and the trustee of trust funds that that's the way we should handle vehicle expenditures going forward, so we can put some money away each year until we need a vehicle. I think Josh and Jerry worked pretty closely on that. So Mr. Flurry has, has brought up, um, the fact that the school board is agents to expend on that. And I got to be 100% honest, I take some of the blame for this coming to you guys late. He said he brought this up a couple of NBC meetings ago and it just got lost in my notes with everything else. And I should have brought it up to you then and I, I forgot to, but he brought it up again. The other night before the board, the committee voted, so I wanted to bring it back to you guys. He had two general issues with how that was all being set up. And one, I think, was clarified. I think he may have been looking at an old version and it, at one point, we were funding at least partially that new trust fund from another trust fund. And that in particular has a bunch of rules that go along with it that we might not have been following the way that it was written. However, the way that it's written now, um, we would fund, we would make that fund. We would put, I think it's 20,000 or 25,000 into it immediately. And that would be raised and appropriate from taxes. So that would be straight up, we're asking the taxpayers for this amount of money. And then the, the next word article is to put some more money in there, but that would come only from surplus at the end of next school year. So it wouldn't be funded from any other trust fund. It would be some straight up from the taxpayers and some from the surplus at the end of the year. So I think issue number one has worked out. Issue number two that he had was, was again, the, the board being agents to expend. I have to plead some ignorance on this. Agents to expend just means we have the authority to spend that money. But I don't know all of the details involved, um, in what exactly it means. So I'm hoping Patty can explain it a little bit and I wanted to hear what Jerry had to say too, but it looks like he was busy. And his main concern was just that basically the school board shouldn't just decide at a meeting on a Tuesday night, hey, we should buy a truck tomorrow type of thing. So I know that there are situations where public hearings are involved. I know there are situations where you specifically have to wait till the March meeting. So I'll let Patty take it away and see if she can explain it to us. But I think we need to come to a consensus tonight, if not have an actual vote on, you know, if we want to change that language or not. And to be perfectly frank, too, that could change how some NBC members vote on that. They were, they were voting with the knowledge that I was going to bring this back to you guys and that one or both of them may change and be cleaned up. So, you know, not saying that to pressure anybody either way. I've got my thoughts on this, but just understand that it could change how they vote on that topic. So Patty, if you can fill us in.
Sure. So typically when we set up trust funds, we do, under Dean's recommendation, name the school board as agents to expend. The trust, the only trust fund that you are not agents to expend is our capital reserve fund. That's why every year we, or most years, we have money that we put into that trust. And then we have another article where Josh, it's typically Josh's items, um, from the CIP, asking to withdraw money from that trust. So you're not an agent to expend, which means the voters decide if Josh says, I want to take out $100,000 to do this project. And the voters say no in March, you cannot spend that money from that trust. That does not happen. You have another chance, um, the following March if they vote no. If you're agents to expend, um, the process is still very transparent. So the voters would be voting to, um, adopt this trust fund. It says in the article that the board is agents to expend. This is, does not give the board free will to do as they please with this fund. It's a vehicle trust fund, which means you can only use it for vehicles. There are requirements for public hearings, so you do have to properly notice a public hearing, seven days in advance of your meeting about what your intention is and how much you're planning to withdraw from the trust. And I would say if the voters are voting to put money into that trust, then they know they're helping you save up for a vehicle. So by the time you get to the point where you're ready to buy the truck, you've been putting money in that the voters have approved to put in. And you're going to have a public hearing to talk about the fact that you're ready to withdraw money and purchase the truck. If you change the way that this trust is worded, like Jerry is suggesting, and make the towns the agents to, the town agents to expend, then you can put money in the trust. At the same time, it would be treated like the capital reserve. Josh would have to come and say, hey, I think I want to buy a new truck this year. So let's ask the voters to take money out of the trust to buy a truck. If they vote no, you cannot buy the truck, period. They said no, that is the last word. You can't get to the end of the year and say, hey, we've got enough in surplus to buy a truck. If the voters say no, you cannot buy the truck. My concern with this is when you're, um, talking about vehicles for the town, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars when you're talking about cruisers and fire trucks and those things. And those tend to be on a more, um, you know, rotational basis. In Pembroke, you have one truck, you have one tractor. Josh will correct me if I'm missing some of his equipment, but, um, you get the gist. We don't just replace a truck every 10 years. We replace the truck basically when it's on its last leg. And Josh says, okay, the repair is going to be more than the truck is worth. It's time. So if we get to that point and Josh comes forward and says, oh my gosh, the truck died. We've got to get the new truck, hold the public hearing, withdraw the money from the trust. The trustee of the trust funds approves, approves that and you get the truck. So hopefully that's clear and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Um, before we do questions, uh, Josh, is there anything that you want to add to that? Since you've worked on this a lot.
I would just second that, you know, being transparent is the most important part. And in this case, being one pickup truck, we, you know, to correct Patty, I will correct her on the machines. We have one van, we have one truck, we have a tractor and we have a smaller tractor with some smaller engines below that. You know, we really try and ride them out as long as we can. Being transparent with the process, we put our vehicles a couple of years ago on a 10-year rotation. 10 years is up on the truck. There's about 46,000 miles on that truck of stop and go for the last 10 years. So to get ahead of that is all we're trying to do. So we don't come to you and, and ask you for the truck right now because it's died. If that truck dies and you guys in the school board isn't an agent to expend, that's going to put, put a significant strain on the crew significantly to go and get parts, to do the errands they need to do and more specifically to tend to the Hill School, which we need that truck to get the machines there to cut the grass. So I would just second what Patty said.
Thanks, Josh. And Jean, was there anything I missed from the budget committee discussion?
Uh, no, you, you, you covered it. And, uh, I, you know, I, I kind of wish that, uh, we were able to have had you there to, uh, explain how it works on a, and so at that meeting, we could have maybe come to a consensus as far as this goes. You know, it's not as cut and dry as I think it was made to sound. If we're not the agent to expend. So, you know, you covered it.
Okay. So yeah, um, I guess any other questions then for Patty or for me or just general discussion? We can spend a few minutes on that.
Um, I'm all for the board being agents to expend on this fund. I think that that is the most sensible, uh, way to do that. This board certainly makes, you know, very important decisions. And I think we can be entrusted to make this type of decision when the time comes. As an alternative, if this is permissible, I'd be totally fine with an or as agents to expend, like the town or the school board, which would just provide the maximum amount of flexibility. You know, if, if for some reason the town could act faster and more nimbly than the school board or vice versa. Um, but I'm totally comfortable with it being just the school board.
Thanks, Amy. Anybody else?
Andy, this is Anne.
Sure.
Jerry would, would weigh in on, um, the suggestion that Amy had can either or. It, it can't be written that way, but Jerry can give you the exact reasons why. The reason why I think it should be, um, a vote from the taxpayers and not agents to expense for the school is because if we do agents to expend from the school, we have a public hearing, people make comments, but it's still five people who are deciding to make this purchase. And yes, the town does have very expensive vehicles, but that way it shows the public that we're truly listening to them. They're going to vote on it. We're going to listen to them. So it takes, puts it back in the resident's hand saying, this is what I want, this is what I don't want with my tax money. If we give it to the school's agent to expend, not that we would do it, but we could buy a truck every year that there's enough money in that account. So, um, I do not believe it should be the school's agents to expend.
Thanks, Anne. Anybody else?
Andy, um, you know, as, as far as this goes on Thursday night, I think we have to have a deeper discussion as far as it. That's explained by Patty and confirmed by Josh. And I don't disagree with Anne at all. But, you know, if, if we lose the truck, um, after meeting in May and, you know, that we're going to have to have another meeting or figure out a means to procure a new truck before we move forward because, you know, like Josh said, we have one, one van and we've got to move that equipment. So this is something I think we have to really come to a consensus with in the, with the budget committee, maybe along the lines of Amy's suggestion. But Anne is right in the respect that, yeah, if there's a certain board in place and they feel like they, they have the money and they want to, they could buy a new truck every year. So, you know, we've got to protect it from abuse, but also have to be able to answer the call when the need arises. You know, the, the fire truck or a police car is getting replaced on a regular schedule because it gets to that point where it is in dire need of, of replacement. Whereas, you know, with, and they also have backups. We don't have any backups. So that's something we have to consider on Thursday.
Thanks, Jean. Um, April, did you want to? I've got an opinion, but I'll wait.
Um, I'd really like to hear from Mr. Flurry and before I come to a conclusion, I did tune into the budget committee meeting and it sounded like that vote was with the assumption that the school board may change something on that warrant, but I may be misinterpreting that vote. So I really feel like I need Mr. Flurry to explain so that we're all on the same page together, before I'd be willing to move on this or to have a full understanding. I mean, obviously with his years of experience, Mr. Flurry is not lightheartedly making this recommendation. It would be, um, with due cause. And I do want to give that adequate respect and consideration.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. Um, Jerry knows what he's doing on this stuff. But I, to me, I've gone back and forth a lot on this because I've been thinking about it since last Thursday. And I think where I landed in my head before Patty spoke tonight, and again, I didn't really understand exactly what each thing meant, but where I landed in my head was. but where I landed in my head was there has to be a public hearing. If we can have a public hearing, then I'm comfortable with it. And that's, you know, making the assumption that a school board, any school board, would, you know, go with the wishes of the public expressed in the public hearing. I know they're not bound illegally to do that, but I would expect that that would be the case. And then, you know, I guess the fail safe is to Gene's point as far as, or Gene and Ann, as far as buying a vehicle whenever you want. The only way that money would get into that fund is at the March meeting. The taxpayers would have to vote to put money in there. So I think if a public hearing happened and we said, hey, we need to buy a truck and it was, you know, whatever, it was February and the public hearing happened and the public said, we don't want you to buy that truck. It's only a month until you get a new budget. So you could, you know, whatever. And we went ahead and did it anyway, then the next time we put money into, tried to put money into that in the Warren article, it would fail. And that, that's kind of, I think the public still has a recourse. If we, if we or a future school board were to go against their wishes, they could simply stop funding that. And I think they would be in the right to do that. So I, in my opinion, having a public hearing covers it, especially as I said, because we can only fund it with the public's approval anyway. And then on top of that, like Gene said, we don't have backups. So if our truck goes, we can't wait, you know, 10 months and then just being respectful to the taxpayers. I, I don't want Josh to be in a position where he has to take that truck that's worth $2,000 and now it's got a broken frame and a blown engine and he has to go put $6,000 into it. That's not a responsible use of, of taxpayer money. So I, I think that's where I come down on it. But I agree. I'd like to hear what Jerry has to say. And like I said before, this doesn't have to be taken care of tonight. We can discuss this. I'll make it very clear when I have a chance to speak on Thursday that this issue is still a little bit up in the air and we'll make sure that it's all sorted out between us and the MBC before the meeting in May. So if there's anything else, I'm happy to hear it. Otherwise, we can move on to the rest of the school district meeting conversation. Okay, Patty?
I think we just put the topic on to talk about it in general. And I wanted to update folks that Josh and Josh, Josh Cosslin and Josh Burby, had a walkthrough with an outside professional to look at the spaces that we were considering using as well as outside. So the plan is for that person to give us a quote very soon, I think within the next week. Present us with the options. Let us know. I think the, one of the requests was, what would it take if we had plans to have it outside and all of a sudden it was going to rain? Could that person be able to put those three locations inside together on a short notice? So we should have all of that information for the next school board meeting. I think that was it.
Excellent. That's good to hear. I guess I'll just update. So we, you know, we did make the decision last time that ours was going to be on May 1st. The Patty let the moderator know that that was our, our intent after the meeting and he agreed that that was okay. The intent is still to have voting on the normal day. And that's thanks to, you know, the, the really well-done effort in November. There's a general feeling that that can be done safely. And I believe, Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the select board last night or Friday night voted to keep their meeting on the regular day in March. Is that accurate, Ann?
Yes, that's true. The, excuse me, the Pembroke Selectmen decided at last night's meeting that they were going to keep their meeting on March 13th, 10 a.m. at PA in the gymnasium.
Okay. And then before we open it up to questions, Ann, you had asked if we could talk about the select board stuff right now. Is that what, is that all you wanted to point out was your meeting or is there something else you want to throw in here?
Yeah, that's correct, Andy. You already mentioned our voting is still going to be on 3/9 at PA in the gymnasium, 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. And the Selectmen are going to stay with their annual meeting on March 13th. And the reasons why they decided that is because the town budget starts January 1st. If we put it out to May, we're already five months into that meet, into that budget. And we could have a significant loss that we wouldn't be able to do a rebound within the last few months that we have left of our budget. And the other reason is the number of people that show up at that annual meeting. David has gone over with Josh on social distancing, how we can set it up. And it's going to look like a lot like we have the polls set up on 3/9. We do have quite a bit of Plexiglas, so we're, the budget committee can use that and also the Selectmen can use that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So any questions for Patty about the district meeting? Or I guess for me or for Ann either? That was mostly just informational. Okay, then we will move on to 3C, which is a draft of next year's school calendar. So I'll turn it back over to Patty.
You'll remember a couple of meetings ago, I gave you the Concord School District draft calendar. The process that we typically follow is to receive Concord's calendar. And then we have a lot of sending districts that use the CRTC program at Concord. And I think most of the area schools try to follow their contract calendar as much as possible. Typically Pembroke sets their calendar first and then the other districts follow. Oftentimes they'll look at the dates for professional development and consider whether they want to stick with us on that because our A, our E, A districts send their students to Pembroke Academy. So they, we all try to coordinate as much as possible. And I think we've done that with this year's calendar. The one thing that we did have a lot of conversation, both with staff and as an administrative team, was the start date. So because of Concord's hours, they have two days less that they need to attend school. So their start, students are starting on Wednesday, the 1st. Because we do need to add two more days to the calendar and we were looking at going into the week of June 20th, we decided to have staff come back the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday prior. So staff would be in on August 25th to the 27th. They have three days before school starts. And then the first day for students would be August 30th. So that would be a Monday. There was one typo in the initial calendar. I think Kathy put the new one up today. The language below did say Labor Day weekend, September 3rd through the 6th, but the calendar itself did not have September 3rd Xed out as a day off. So that's fixed. So the Labor Day weekend is a long four-day weekend, which is in line with the Concord School District. We have the same breaks that they do. I think where we differ a little bit is in our professional development days. And we have one district-wide professional development day every March and we do it on voting day, specifically so that we don't have students in the building. And the entire SAU chooses that day, both because it's voting and our commitment to work together with our professional development. It's the one day a year that we can bring the entire SAU and put on some really great professional development that everyone can share. I think those are the highlights and it would be great if you were comfortable approving it tonight. I don't think there's a lot of deviation from past years.
Great. Thanks. Any questions on this?
Andy, this is Ann. At the area committee meetings, we had a lot of discussions from the other districts that we didn't take into consideration their start date. Do we know tonight what our other districts' start dates are? Not Derry, Darefield, but the other ones.
I did not speak to Peter about that, Ann. Typically they watch to see what Pembroke decides. That's how they've traditionally moved forward with their calendars. They, they wait to see when our students are starting and typically follow suit, although they're all a little bit different. EPSM only has one staff day at the beginning of the year and I think the other two districts have two and we have three. So the start of the year is always a little bit different.
Okay. The second question I have is, my children had graduated a while ago. So what is early release? Does that count towards the hours that we can use to say that we had a full day?
When we moved to hours, we, instead of counting days, we actually count instructional hours. So if we're in school for two and a half hours on an early release day, we only count two and a half instructional hours for that day.
So what's the reason for early release?
The early release day in December coincides with report cards and that's when parent conferences are. So they start in late afternoon and they go through the evening. And then I think, I don't know if there's any others. I think we took the others out. And the last day of school was always an early release.
Thank you very much. I did just have one other question is, when, why do we have January 3rd off? New Year's Eve is December 31st, which is a Friday. New Year's Day is actually a Saturday. So why do we have the 3rd off?
When a holiday falls on a Saturday, you have the Monday off? It's, it's a federal holiday.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the, the 3/8 information there also, Patty. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions regarding the calendar?
Andy, this is just, this is April. I do have a question. I'm curious of why typically November 11th, which is Veterans Day, the students are not in school. I certainly understand if someone's a veteran giving them that day. But many years ago, when I was in school, that day was used for a veteran presentation to come into the school. And I'm just curious when we're giving, when the, you know, when we're closed that day, instead of having our children in school and possibly inviting veterans to come in.
I think all of our schools do have veteran assemblies. I know Hill School has every year. I typically attended those. There's, sometimes veterans come in and sometimes there's an assembly or classroom activities, but we do absolutely celebrate and recognize the veterans around Veterans Day.
This is April. Just follow up, please. So I guess I'm, I'm not understanding, are we just not having school on that day simply to mirror Concord's schedule?
All of our school districts have had Veterans Day off for as far back as I can remember. Every district has as well as Concord.
Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion to approve or consider?
Motion to approve.
Amy, second.
All right. Any further discussion? I do have one question, Patty. I, I think I know the answer, but worth mentioning. Since we, I, I believe when we switched to ours, Blizzard bags were basically done away with. Is that, that correct? So this is, this calendar for next year would build in enough time in theory that if we had a few snow days, we would not have to make them up in June, but we would also not be utilizing Blizzard bag. Is that correct?
That is correct. When you switch to an instructional hour model, there are no Blizzard bag days and you are required to incorporate five days into your calendar. So we, unless we have more than five snow days, we don't have to add any time on to the end of our calendar. We're pretty sure when our last day will be.
Thanks. I thought that. Just wanted to make sure.
Andy, this is Ann. I apologize. I didn't write it quick enough. The teacher's start date is August 25th?
Yes, it's a Wednesday.
And what is the parent's start date?
Sometimes they've come back two days ahead and sometimes one. It depends on what the administration is doing the first three days of school. So they have a set number of calendar days or contracted days. And we determine that on a yearly basis, which days they're going to work to fulfill those days.
Thank you, Patty.
All right. Any other discussion before we call the question? Okay, there's a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 student staff calendar on a roll call vote. I will start with Gene.
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ann? I, I think I heard a yes, Ann. I only heard the tail end.
Yes.
Thanks. And Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So there you go. All right. That's all we have under immediate business. So we'll move on to agenda number seven, which is our board reports. And I don't see Ryan on here unless he's on the phone. Ryan, if you are on the phone, hit star six and yell at me, but I'm assuming that you're not. So we're going to move on to SAU board slash exec board and that's Ann.
Thank you, Andy. They have not had a meeting since December 10th.
All right. Then the area committee, which I think is also Ann and Amy. Is that right? I don't know why I don't have your names on that one.
Yeah, their last meeting was December 10th also.
Okay. Budget committee, we've already pretty much talked about. I guess the big update is from Thursday. We were able to take them, our kind of final numbers. They, they voted and they supported pretty much everything that we had. There was the vote on the big budget number, I believe passed six to four, so it was close. But I'm, I'm extremely happy to be going into the public hearing and the meetings with a number that both of the board, both the board and the committee supported. I think it's very important for the town. There were, there was a lot of expression of gratitude from multiple members of the budget committee. And they wanted me to bring back to this board. They were very appreciative of the cuts that we've made. They were, they expressed understanding that that was not done lightly and that those things would have an impact. But we're also very appreciative that we were able to do it anyway, especially in this, you know, very chaotic year money-wise. So it was, overall, I think it's been a good year. I think we were able, you know, we got them a lot of information very early and the chair expressed a lot of gratitude for that early on. Overall, I, I think this was kind of a little bit of a healing year between the school board and the, and the budget committee, which is great. I, I think it's a step in the right direction to us working closely in the future. It's always going to be a little difficult because our calendars don't line up. You know, like Ann said, the town works on a fist, on a calendar year budget. And, you know, technically right now they're using a budget that hasn't passed yet. And when we pass our budget, it's going to be months premature, which causes its own challenges. And the fact that those two things don't line up, it's, it's rough for everybody. But I, I think we definitely made some strides on mending some fences and, and finding some common ground this year. So that was great. I, Gene can jump in if he has anything else, but I think for the most part, the meetings were, were cordial and in a spirit of cooperation. So.
Andy, can I just add something I meant to mention it earlier? So we worked very quickly, just so that everyone is aware and can share this. We worked very quickly after the MBC meeting on Thursday evening, quickly and collaboratively with all of us in the town and the school and got all of the documents updated. The tax impact sheet was, it was a pretty frantic day on Friday, but everything done. We have 100 copies in both places. So the town has 100 copies of their materials and 100 copies of our materials. And then we also at the SAU have 100 copies of each. We've made that known to the public so that they can come in and get hard copies. It's a virtual meeting, so we won't be able to hand anything out. And we wanted people that didn't have access to print materials or to a computer screen to be able to have those. So we've advertised that. We've also posted on the webpage in advance of the public hearing, the full budget, all the supporting documents, as well as the packet for the actual public hearing on Thursday. So I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that everything's out there and it was done with a pretty quick turnaround.
Yep. Thanks for that. I meant to point that out. So yeah, there's, you, if you need papers, you can get them at the town office or the SAU office. They are posted on both websites also, I believe. And further during the meeting, I will be putting, I will be screen sharing my computer. And so whatever document is being talked about at the time, whether or not it's me or David or Mark LaPage, the chair of the budget committee, will be putting those up on the screen too. So if you're logged into the, the public hearing with your computer, you'll be able to see the documents that we're talking about while we're talking about them. So we're trying to make it as accessible as we possibly can. Any budget committee related questions?
Andy, this is Ann.
Yep.
I just wanted to point out or ask a question as an observer at that last part. Two meetings ago for the Budget Committee. Um, two members strongly suggest that the school have. More meetings during the Budget Committee. Con conversations because if there's questions or there's something that needs to be done. Um, they were a little discouraged that we waited. In their mind that we waited to the very last meeting that we could possibly have. So that was just one comment from the Budget Committee. They would like to have the school have more meetings. During the budget time.
Yep, um, that's accurate. I I would, I would push back a little bit, I think. Um. And I kind of said this to Mark, this has obviously been an extraordinary year for everybody. I don't recall having problems getting information this late in the game in previous years. Um, so I'm hoping that next year. Uh, you know, especially by budget season next year, we're a lot more back to normal. Um. But also it's, there's, I think there's a discrepancy in how we all understand how this stuff works too, and. Well, it is certainly nice to be able to give, like I said, quote unquote, final numbers um as early as possible. The fact that our year end isn't even close yet and things like that kind of prohibit us from. From doing that. Um, and I'm certainly open to adding more meetings. Have we Patty, have we approved a board calendar for next year yet? I can't remember.
No, we haven't.
Okay, so so Anne, remind me then too, I I'm certainly not opposed to adding a meeting or two. Um, but I also just want everybody to be aware that, you know, we we kind of keep working on the budget and keep trying to find. Any efficiencies that we can um right up till the last minute and and I certainly wouldn't want to feel like. If the Budget Committee didn't know about it, you know, we can't do it if it's something that's going to help the taxpayers, so. Um, but yeah, definitely when we're talking about next year's board calendar, we can look at it. Um. It is, I would say, one of the most important functions that we have, so um whatever we can do to make it go more smoothly is fantastic.
Thank you, Andy. I just wanted to be sure that the Budget Committee on, you know, years that we're we're discussing it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. So waiting for, oh, who's that?
This is Jean, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, I just wanted to point out something I I after. That comment was made, I did go back and look at our calendar this year. We've had, I I believe this might be our twenty ninth meeting this year. Uh, which is far in excess of any meetings. The school board has had in the past, and I believe it's our thirteenth meeting since October. So one thing, the the one thing that I will say is that. As a board together, we need to be more efficient in our meetings, so. We don't have to add extra meetings all the time to get the amount of work done that needs to be done for the schools and also the Budget Committee. Um. We have not lacked meetings this year. That is for certain. Um. We just have to be more efficient in the manner we approach these meetings, not getting off into the weeds every. Chance we get, which we're all. Yeah.
Yep, I would agree with that. And and also, I I mean, I keep blaming this first on on things or blaming things on this, but it's. True, you know, we've spent a crazy amount of time just talking about COVID and how we're going to deal with it. And and you can't look past that. I mean, we spend some some meetings, we spend it. Close to two hours just on that topic and we we have to, we don't have a choice, so. Um, but I'm right there with you, Jean. I'm looking forward to the days of two hour board meetings again, and we're on a pretty good pace tonight, so. Um, speaking of pace, do you have anything for pace, Jean? I don't know if you're talking or not. I lost your video.
I'm on pace also, and as far as I know, there are no updates.
Okay, um, we will go, uh, let's see if is Kevin with us tonight? I see a Kevin, Kevin Foss, if that's you, go ahead and unmute yourself. Guess not. Okay. Um. I I think I'll speak to that a little bit. I'm technically the board rep to that. Um, I I think they're done. I think they're basically ready to. Present to us. Um, it just hasn't been asked to be put on an agenda yet. Um, and I think, I think the idea is it's not going to happen for this March meeting, obviously, anyway, so no rush to get it in. And while we've got COVID and budget and everything else going on, um, it's not a. High priority at the moment, but I think that project is pretty much wrapped up. Um, and. As soon as we can, I would like to hear from him. I'll send Kevin an email and ask us, or ask him rather, if he can join us maybe in March to let us know what's going on with that. Um, so that brings us to our admin team. Um, and I think I'll start with Wendy this time.
Hello, um, so just a couple of things since um last time we met. Um, obviously we had to go full remote for two days. Um. And uh, the reason was for a critical staff shortage and I get, I feel, I get a lot of emails asking for more specifics and I. You know, respond back and say that I just have to be very careful. There's a lot of medical privacy in and of this, so I can't provide those specific details. That would lead to information. Um, but I wanted the community, everybody to know that if we do have positive cases, I absolutely send out those notifications. There were some concerns that. We had positive cases running rampant in the building and they weren't being notified of that, and that's not true. Um, so we do notify every single one of those cases. Um, so just to hopefully clarify that for anybody. Um, I also encourage anyone who has any questions about anything, so please feel free to email me. Um, or, you know, call. Um, a lot of times just a conversation can kind of help everyone with that. Um, and then the other thing we're excited about, um, more of our normalcy uh in February coming up, we do Read Across America. Um. We have our technology integrator and our guidance counselor are working on putting together a virtual version of it, so I hope everyone can uh kind of. Get into that and see what's going on. There's a lot of uh green screening going on maybe to prepare for this. Um, couple of montages coming our way, so we're excited for those little bits of uh normal and fun.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Wendy?
Andy, this is Anne. Um, just a quick question. I was able to tour Three Rivers and PA. Is there any particular day of the week that would be best? If I was asked to um come in and and tour Hill?
I would definitely say Wednesday through uh Friday are the best days. Monday and Tuesday, we have lots of meetings and different things going on.
Thank you very much.
Any others? All right, um, just to keep it interesting, we're going to leapfrog John and go right to Dan. Didn't see that coming, did you?
Wow. Um, good evening. Uh, so a couple of things, uh, the National Honor Society uh kind of answered a call uh last week when Sergeant Huber. Uh, came back to Pembroke. He's a Pembroke Academy alumnus and they had. Signs that were out on our main lawn and uh hanging in our windows and. Uh, I believe they even had students uh holding signs out on the side of the road for a little bit too, so. Uh, that support was really nice. Uh, co-curriculars are continuing uh very smoothly. Uh, and we've gotten a lot of good feedback regarding our live streaming uh situation for our home basketball games. Uh, and so I encourage all of you to go check those out. Uh, the link's right on our homepage. Uh, we did conclude the information night for our sending schools last week and that went very well. It's admittedly a pretty awkward format, uh, but. I am not a stranger to awkward situations, and so it went fairly well. Um. I want to just give a public service announcement. We have nominations for our Pembroke Academy Hall of Fame. Uh, the inductees to the Hall of Fame are uh inducted typically during our convocation ceremony, and so. We are soliciting nominations up until February nineteenth, and then there's a committee that will pore over those and make some final determinations. Uh, lastly, we have uh two Students of the Month that I want to recognize for November. Our Student of the Month was Jack Harkness, who is a senior. Uh, is an all around great guy, a role model to our students, particularly our underclassmen. And uh has a future, uh, a promising future ahead of him in the Coast Guard. Uh, which he's very excited about and we're, uh, as a son of a Coast Guard member, I'm excited that he is uh going to pursue that branch of the military. Uh, and then for December, Emily Hussey is a freshman uh who received recognition for um her um. Her work with our Chain Reaction Club, which is a group that works on school climate and they do um. You know, events and different projects that help support uh climate and culture in the building, which is. A little challenging this year, but uh they've come up with some digital ways that are kind of interesting for them to do that. Uh, and uh, one event that is coming up soon that I will certainly not be participating in is uh. Cut for the Cause, which is where staff members and students donate their hair for wigs. Uh, so that is coming up shortly, and that is a tradition that typically happens during Winter Carnival, and we're going to continue to do that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for Dan?
I think if you start now, you can be ready for next year.
I can tell you with great certainty that is not going to happen.
Uh, Andy, this is Anne. I just want to say thank you for mentioning the um homecoming. For our resident. Um, they were just. The public was concerned that PA wouldn't put it on their sign, and I saw you have to do is call and ask. And um, I did want to say thank you. Um, the uh tie a yellow ribbon was a nice touch around the trees at PA. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Anything else for PA? All right, John.
Hi, everybody. Um, I don't have a ton of stuff tonight. Uh, I do want to start with our our basketball teams are uh playing. Uh, we did have to uh cancel a game due to COVID um for, I think it was a week. But we're, we're attempting to livestream also, and we've gotten a few games under our belt, and it seems to be going uh relatively well. Uh, we were also um. Awarded a grant by from the Robotics Education Development Program from the state in the amount of four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we will put towards our our robotic uh group in uh Three Rivers. And that will go towards uh go a long ways towards uh supplies, uh transportation, registration fees, uh t-shirts and uniforms. Um, those type of things. So we're excited to get that. Um. I also do want to echo what Wendy said about some of the, uh, obviously, I don't know if it is obvious, but I hope it's obvious. We are still in remote. Um, and it is very uh very challenging and frustrating to try to explain all this to uh everybody without giving away too much information of. We do have uh privacy concerns. Uh, but rest assured that it's not necessarily amount. It's it's the key of. And critical staff that had to quarantine that has created this, and we are hopefully um. Ready to go next week. Uh, I still have to wait a few days before um we can make that decision, but that is the hope when we get back to hybrid. Uh, next week. And that's about all I got.
All right, questions for John? Okay. Thank you all. Appreciate the updates. Um, and that is the end of our board reports, so we will move on to agenda item number eight, which is policy. Um, Patty, anything we need to know before we start talking about these?
Uh, the first policy GBD is ready for approval. Uh, we had added a line at the request of the school board to make provisions for. Staff members who were also residents of Pembroke to be able to submit comments as a parent to the board. So that line was added um. Under the first paragraph a couple of meetings ago, so it should be ready to go.
Andy, this is April. I'd like to make a motion that we actually resend policy GBD Board Staff Communications. Um, the reasons for that is this is an option, this is a policy that is classified as optional. Um, according to the New Hampshire School Board Association. It was last revised by the New Hampshire School Board Association in nineteen ninety nine and reviewed in two thousand and four. Um, there are some chief concerns with the current policy and proposed policy, um, because. The language um that is currently in here would prohibit. Uh, school board members who wish to in their parental capacities visit schools as well at without notifying um. The appropriate people at the school. It, there's not also no language that speaks about school board members attending. Um, public events such as votings and public meetings, um, or community meetings. So those are the reasons that I am making this motion to rescind this policy. Thank you.
Okay, um, is there a second for that?
This is Anne, I'll second.
Okay, so discussion around removing um GBD from our policy set altogether.
Uh, this is Amy. I think it are, where I came out the last time we discussed this policy, my understanding is what I mean. My understanding is. Uh. We were gonna approve this policy with the addition of that language, and so that's what I'm interested in doing.
All right, other comments?
I just want to say I recall the same as Amy.
All right, um, if there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and roll call vote to resend um GBD. Uh, I'll start with Amy.
No.
Um, Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
No.
And I'm a no. So that motion fails. Um, and. Anything else?
Amy, come up. Um, approve the policy as amended?
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
All right, discussion around GBD again.
Andy, this is April. I cannot support the policy as currently re-written and um. Again, um, the main reason is the Visit to Schools state that individual board members interested in visiting schools or classrooms. Will inform the superintendent of such visits and make arrangements for visitations through the principles of the various schools. Such visits shall be regarded as informal expressions of interest in school affairs and not as inspections or visits for supervisory. Or administrative purposes. Official visits by school board. Members will be carried on only under board authorization and with the full knowledge of the superintendent. And principals. I do agree with that last sentence uh about the official visits, but this is a public school. This school is used for more than just. Educating our children, and I cannot in good faith. Vote for a policy that affects current board members and board members in the future that says that if we step into a school. We must notify the superintendent, and I would ask any of you that currently have children in school. Do you do that every time you step into the school building? If you do not, you're violating what? This policy says. You know, if you go to vote, do you notify the superintendent? If you don't, if we all do not do that, we are violating this policy. That is before us tonight, and that is the primary reason why I cannot support the current policy.
Thanks, April. Um, for my part, I I think I'm interpreting this slightly differently and uh it may be wrong, but um. I'm, I think that to me, I'm assuming that the official visits. Is kind of applicable to that entire paragraph, and if I'm. Were to go to the school for something for one of my children, I certainly wouldn't consider that an official visit. Um, but I I see where you're coming from. Any other discussion on GBD? Okay, then on a roll call vote, um, we'll start with Anne.
No.
Jean?
Yes.
April?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the motion carries.
Andy, this is April, just as a follow up. Um, if we are going to adhere to the letter of this policy, just want to make it known that. The majority of this aboard has approved that when you step into a school district property, you need to notify the superintendent. Thank you.
Um, so.
I'm sorry, this is Amy. I just wanted to um. State that my understanding is that we just approved. Language that says individual board members interested in visiting schools, so on and so forth. So I think it's important to actually focus on the language that we approved.
Andy, this is April, if I may. What happens if a school board member, um, does an individual school board member. Uh, does set foot in a school and does not contact the superintendent? Is this something that's just a policy that nothing will happen to make sure that happened? You know, that notification process happens?
Um, I I don't, I don't know, April. I guess we could, you know, we could ask Patty to ask Dean to interpret that for us, but I know that there are many times in my capacity. But I know that there are many times in my capacity as a school board member that I speak publicly. And I just simply state I am speaking on my own behalf and not as a school board member. Um, and I think that any, I think a reasonable assumption would be the same thing. That if I go to school because my son is running in a race at a school, that I'm not attend, that I'm not entering school property as a school board member at that point, I'm entering school property as a parent. Um, I think most of us have used that language in, in some capacity. I'm here as myself, not as a school board member. And I don't see why that wouldn't carry over in this same scenario. Um, but again, that's just my interpretation, so. Um, Patty, we have GBDB, I like to say that one, um, as a no action at this meeting. Can you explain that?
Yes, so we had initially put this on knowing that we were negotiating with the paraprofessionals. And I think it needs to be held until, in, in my opinion, it should be held until the vote on their contract because the board may want to consider this policy in conjunction with that so that you can see what benefits, um, those covered under the agreement are afforded if their contract passes and then compare it to the, the people that aren't covered. So I was suggesting that we may just want to keep this until that vote happens.
Okay.
Andy, this is April. I would like to make a motion that we rescind policy JEC. Um, this is one of the policies that action is not required tonight. However, the recommendation from, says that it's to withdraw the policy because it's included in J C A. Thank you.
Okay, um, just one moment. Let me just make sure. We just spoke about GBDB. Um, is there anybody on the board that feels that we should take action on that against Patty's judgment today? Okay, didn't think so. Just wanted to check. So open for the rest of them. So there's a motion from April to withdraw JEC. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the title of that is manifest, manifest of hardship.
All right, is there, um, a second?
I'll second that.
All right, discussion. And again, just for the public that's listening, we do get recommendations on some of these. Um, the policies come by and large from the New Hampshire School Board Association. Um, our attorney reviews them in conjunction with the administration, makes recommendations to the board, whether or not we should accept what the New Hampshire School Board Association has put for a template, um, or adds or removes language based on our district, or recommends that we, you know, take them off the books as, is like what we're talking about here if they are outdated or covered in something new or whatever. So just wanted to clarify that for anybody that's listening and might not be familiar with this stuff. So any other discussion of JEC? Okay, then on a roll call vote to withdraw JEC, manifest of hardship. Um, April?
Yes.
Jean? Didn't hear you, Jean. Sorry, I saw your mouth move.
Yeah, I'm having connection problems here, so, um, yes.
Okay, um, I forgot, uh, no, I already got April. Ann?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So JEC is gone. Uh, we have.
Andy, this is April again. I'd like to make a motion that we approve policy BG Board Policy Process and BGA Policy Development System. Um, the reason I'm making this motion is both of these policies were revised by the Pembroke School District in the 1990s. And since then, they have been updated by the New Hampshire School Board. Thank you.
Okay, so a motion to approve BG and BGA. Is there a second?
This is Anna, second.
All right, discussion around either or both of those.
Uh, this is Amy. I just have a question. So for both of these, are we, uh, considering approving the current version, um, from the School Board Association?
Yes, um, well, it would be whatever's in our drive, which probably has the yellow on it. Um, and that's Dean's recommendations, so. Bringing it up right now.
Asking because what I'm looking at in the drive doesn't have any markup and it's not clear to me. Um, like for example, BG Board Policy Process, there's, there's no, um, School District Association watermark or stamp, and it says revised November 1999.
Yeah, so usually, um, we get two copies of things and one is edited, one, one's not, depending on how we're looking at them. Well, I'm trying to find.
Andy, this is April. If it's helpful, um, my recommendation is that, is that we make a mo, my motion, if I, should I need to clarify it? By it is that, um, to adopt the New Hampshire School Board Association's current version of BG and BGA. Thank you for that request for clarification, Amy.
Yep, and, and looking at those, Amy, you'll see a lot of the other ones in the drive have yellow and these two don't. So I believe there were no edits from Dean, so it is just the NHSBA policy. All right, Patty?
Um, the yellow is actually not edits from Dean. That's the way they come from the School Board Association. So if we do track the changes, Kathy's very careful to put who made the edits. Amy submits language, it will say edits. Um, so the two versions, if it doesn't say Pembroke School District with an approval date and there's no editing, then it's the school board version. So thank you for clarifying that.
It looks like a third right, maybe.
Andy, this is April. I just want to, um, say that I appreciate my fellow boardmates considering the approval of these simply because we have a long list and I think these are two that are kind of easy to quickly look at the policies and just see the age of our current policy, um, and the current policy from New Hampshire School Board. And to me, that's an easy approval, so I appreciate your consideration.
Any other comments on BG or BGA? Okay, then on a roll call vote to approve policy BG Board Policy Process and policy BGA Policy Development System. Um, I will start with Amy.
Yes.
And April?
Yes.
And Ann?
Yes.
And Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that's two more off the list. I think there are five others that are on second. Oh, no, I think four others on second reading. Nope, it's five.
Andy, this is April. I'd like to make a motion that we, um, table the, uh, remaining policies that are listed for review for, on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Dan, I'll second.
All right, discussion around tabling. Um, so that would be, I'll get this wrong, but I'll try EBB, EBCA, EBCB, GBCD, IHBG, GCA, and then our, um, a couple of their first readings, JLC, JLCD, and JLCJ. Um, so typically, we can't take action on the first reading ones anyway, and that makes up about half of the ones that are left. So really the ones in question here that we could do something with tonight, I believe, would be EBB School Safety, EBCA Crisis Prevention and Emergency Response Plans, EBCB Fire and All Hazard Drills, the Home Education Instruction IHBG, and JCA Best Interest and Manifest of Hardship.
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. The reason why I seconded is we have a, a new fire chief in town. So, um, I did have a brief discussion with him last night concerning these, but I would like to get more information from him. And being that he is in a new position, I would like to hold off. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion around tabling those?
Andy, this is April. I just want to say the reason I'm making this motion is because we've talked about trying to make our meetings more efficient. Um, so that's one of the reasons. And the other reason is it gives us a little more time to dig into these that may require, um, you know, more reading and comparing to current policies to what's being suggested. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, then on a roll call vote, motion to table remaining policies for this evening. Um, well, the other way, Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Uh, and I'm a no. So the motion carries. Um, so that moves us on to agenda item number nine. Any informational items, Patty? Uh, we did have something, I wrote, I wrote down that we had something for number nine. From agenda review, but.
Yes, uh, the request to share the names of the candidates?
Yes, thank you.
So I just want to stress, um, I was not asked to bring anything official, so this is only going by my memory of what Kathy told me as events unfolded. So that's my disclaimer, um, when I give you these names. And like I said, we haven't checked in with the school district clerk, um, on whether or not anyone filed through her. So the, the candidates that I do know about for school board, um, Jean's seat is up and he is running again for that. And then Tim Girardi and Karen Yeton also, um, signed up at the SEU office. And then for town moderator, uh, Tom Seraphin is running. He is our current moderator, as is Mark Dumont. And that's all I know at this point.
All right, thanks. Um, and no other informational items?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, do we have need for non-public, Patty?
Ken, sorry.
No.
Corey, Amy?
Could we, um, get the full and final information on candidates emailed to us?
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Um, this is April. Could we also have that information publicly posted on our website since that is public information?
Yeah, and I wonder if the town is, I don't know if the town posts that or not, because it's school stuff.
Um, Andy, excuse me, um, the town usually does, but I can also, um, bring it up in tomorrow morning with, um, Jim Goff, if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have personal feelings one way or the other, but I, you know, obviously more information out to everybody is a good thing.
Thank you.
Um, and you said no to non-public, Patty?
Correct.
All right, then agenda item number 11 is appointments, resignations, retirements. It looks like we don't have any of those either. So.
This is April. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wow, that's a new record. Is there a second?
Ann, I'll second.
All right, then on a roll call vote to adjourn at 7:53 PM.
Just make an attempt at a humorous, um, point of discussion. So when I was considering the time commitment involved in running for school board, I attended like three meetings just like this. And I was bamboozled into thinking it's always going to be like this.
Yeah. Weren't we all stupid viruses? All right, um, on a roll call vote to adjourn at 7:53, um, April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
Ann?
Yes.
Jean?
Uh, I'm kind of uncertain about this, but.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, everybody. Talk to you in a couple of weeks. Next scheduled meeting, 12, or I'm sorry, 2:16. Same bat time, same bat channel.
All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you all. Take care.
Bye-bye.